willing to meet with us tonight and share with us the Pope's Second Encyclical entitled Laudato Si. And that tonight, Pat Schneider and Buzz and Mary Turgerson from the Committee will be offering a presentation to help us understand. Oftentimes, they ask for, you know, a presentation at Mass. The problem with that is that there isn't enough time to go into the depth that some of these topics require. So I said, why don't let's use this forum where we have a number of people and have the time that such an important topic deserves. So I'm grateful to them, and I invite you to open your ears and your hearts to listen and receive the message. Not that they're presenting, but that Pope Francis himself has presented to us, to the Church and to the world.
Okay, are you ready for us, Father John?
We're ready, Mary. And just a reminder to everybody, on the upper right-hand corner of your screen, there's something that says Speaker View. And if you click on that, just the person speaking will fill the screen. You can always go back to all of the squares, but if you just want to, and sometimes it actually helps in hearing more clearly if you have it on Speaker View for the speaker. Okay, Mary.
Okay, well, and I'm going to even throw you another curve because we're going to do a PowerPoint presentation tonight. And with that, I'm going to share the screen now, so it may, I don't know what it's going to do to your screen. But I'm going to start with this one slide that will show you how professional we are here. And we're going to start out with tips. And the tips that I'd like to share with you, I was the only one on this meeting when I took the picture. So I only had two bars up here. But if you look and if you have a column of people to the right side or someplace on your screen, you can minimize that to just one person by, I only show two bars. You probably show three at the top of the column of people. You can minimize it to just the speaker by clicking this bar. And if you don't want to see the speaker, if you click the first bar over here, it will show like this and then just say who's talking. So I say that because some of the PowerPoint presentation may be hidden behind the column of people that is off to the right, of which I am looking at as I speak. And the other one, as Father John said, there's them down at the bottom or around your screen. There is a mute and a video. I am, there's no red lines through me, so you should be able to hear and see me. But both of your mute or your microphone should be, have a red line through it, so we don't have background noise. And then there's the chat button. We'll be taking questions and answers at the end of the presentation, and you feel free to put your questions into the chat. And with that, welcome to Laudato Si, on Care for Our Common Home. We appreciate Father John inviting the Social Justice Committee to this Town Hall. I guess you have to watch out what you ask for. We weren't expecting to have, you know, 45 minutes plus to be able to share with you. But we hope that you enjoy what we are bringing to you tonight. Last week, I think Father mentioned on the Town Hall that June 18th marked the fifth anniversary of the encyclical of Pope Francis, where he invites all of us to cry, to hear the cry of the earth and the cry of the poor as we consider how interconnected all of God's creations are. Tonight, we share this important document with you and how environmental justice connects to the practicing of our faith. Let us begin with a prayer to the earth, for the, for our earth, that was in the encyclical Laudato Si in 2015. "All powerful God, you are present in the whole universe and in the smallest of your creatures. You embrace with your tenderness all that exists. Pour out upon us the power of your love, that we may protect life and beauty. Fill us with peace, that we may live as brothers and sisters, harming no one. God of the poor, help us to rescue the abandoned and forgotten of this earth, so precious in your eyes, bringing healing to our lives, that we may protect the world and not prey on it, that we may sow beauty, not pollution and destruction. We thank you for being with us each day. Encourage us, we pray, in our struggle for justice, love, and peace. Amen." And before we get into Laudato Si in more depth, I'd like to take just a minute or two to share with you a little bit about our Social Justice Committee, which come this August will be in existence for two years now. Back then, two years, almost two years ago, a group of St. Perpetual parishioners, including me, were feeling very frustrated about what was happening in our country and in our communities. And we agree, we really wanted to do something to help bring about a peaceful change while following the values instilled in us through the Gospel and the Catholic social teachings. Over the first six to nine months, we met once a month and developed our mission statement and identified three key areas that we wanted to focus on: immigration, healthcare, and housing for the homeless, all of which were really prominent issues at that time and continue to be today, too. As other key issues came up, we did research on them and keeping true to our mission, we took action where it was warranted and even presented some of these ideas to you, the parish. Here's the mission that guides us. "Based upon the right to dignity for all, we will provide advocacy for basic rights for the vulnerable in a nonviolent way, keeping in mind, what would Jesus do? We look to transform lives through the change of public policy to, for, so everyone can be and feel secure. And we hope to bring our quest for social justice to you, our parish, through education, advocacy, and sharing opportunities for action. And actually, tonight provides an opportunity for this education and some involvement, too. So now, we will begin our presentation on Laudato Si, on Care for Our Common Home. We'll begin with a short introduction, and that will be followed by sections on the background, major themes. We'll get into some action steps that we can take and share some resources with you also. As you may know, and I know Father John has mentioned, Laudato Si translated is "Praise be to you", which is the first line of the Canicle by St. Francis of Assisi, that praises God with all of his creation. The encyclical is the Church's most profound and comprehensive statement yet on caring for creation and the poorest. From the outset, Pope Francis states the goal of his document as, "I would like to enter into dialogue with all people about our common home." And as noted on this slide from paragraph number 14, he makes an urgent appeal to discuss how we are shaping the future of our planet and to include everyone, since the environmental challenge and its human roots affects all of us. And for your information, each paragraph within the encyclical is numbered, and there are a total of 246 paragraphs. But it is a very, it's an easy read and a very interesting read. In paragraph 49, the Pope links the ecological to a social approach that must include discussions of justice, as well as opening our ears and listening to both the earth and the poor. This inspirational letter calls us to examine our hearts, transform our social values, and take action for global solidarity to build and protect our common home. So to share some of the background of the Church and guidance to we, the faithful, I invite Buzz Sherwood.
The Catholic Church dates back almost 2,000 years to Peter, the rock on whom Jesus built his church. In that sense, the Catholic Church can be seen as static, unchanging. In another sense, the Church is and always has been dynamic, interpreting the times and applying the teachings of the Church to respond to the realities of the world. Throughout the ages, it has been the responsibility of Popes to discern the signs of the times and issue guidance to the faithful. Peter himself exercised this dynamic responsibility when, divinely inspired, he declared that Gentile converts did not need to be circumcised. In more recent times and with a Church that spans the globe, Popes have used the encyclical as a means of addressing matters of great significance. Pope Pius XII held that encyclicals are sufficiently authoritative to end theological debate on a particular question, because what is set forth in an encyclical is already grounded in Catholic doctrine. Fast forward 1,900 years to 1891. In discerning the signs of his times, Pope Leo XIII issued the encyclical Rerum Novarum, which, among other things, recognized the dignity of work and the right of workers to organize and receive a fair wage. Technological advancements in the 20th and 21st centuries have brought the human family to a place where we can protect or destroy the environment of our home, Planet Earth. Pope Francis' encyclical on the environment, Laudato Si, seeks to draw our collective attention to the need to protect and sustain the planet, which sustains human life. But this is not the brainchild or personal whim of Pope Francis. For 50 years, successive Popes have sounded the alarm and the, and the need to preserve and protect the environment. In 1971, Pope Paul VI said in an apostolic letter, "Man's ill-considered exploitation of nature risks destroying it and becoming in turn the victim of this degradation." In 1990 and 91, Pope John Paul II spoke extensively about the plight of the environment in an encyclical and at World Peace Day. He said, "World peace is threatened by a lack of due respect for nature, by the plundering of natural resources, and by a progressive decline in the quality of life." Pope Benedict XVI also expressed deep concern about the environment in his last encyclical and at World Peace Day 2010. He said, "Preservation of the environment and particular attention to climate change are matters of grave concern for the whole human family." He also said, "The Church has a responsibility towards creation to protect earth, water, and air as gifts of God, the Creator, meant for everyone, and above all, to save mankind from the danger of self-destruction." These quotes are just snippets from the extensive treatment of this subject by the three Popes preceding Pope Francis. In Laudato Si, Pope Francis is merely continuing to express a grave concern that has been expressed for 50 years. I'll be followed by Pat Schneider, who will present to you the major themes of Laudato Si.
If you've read Laudato Si, I think you will agree that it is a very rich document, filled with many very valuable insights. It is quite poetic at times. Pope Francis writes very frankly in describing climate change and our environmental crisis and our usual inadequate approaches to these problems. Francis speaks very plainly about our responsibility before God in these matters. I'm going to try to briefly point out some of the major themes, eight specifically, in this work. I am not able to truly do them justice, but hope to give you an overview that will perhaps encourage you to spend a little more time thinking about what he tells us. Perhaps even read the encyclical if you haven't. It is well worth the time. As Buzz has pointed out, the call to care for creation is an established part of Catholic social teaching. In addition, we hear much about climate change, the dire strait of our environment, et cetera, from many other sources, scientific, political, et cetera. Pope Francis' work, however, is important to us because it connects this critical issue to our faith and how we live it out. He speaks not just to us Catholics, but as he says, to everyone in the world. Laudato Si is a moral and spiritual challenge. Response to climate change and environmental degradation is not simply a scientific or political problem. It is an urgent moral issue. We are called to examine how we look at care of our world and how we live by reexamining what we mean when we call ourselves children of God, gifted with his whole creation, and how we see our relationship to all other things and to the whole created world. Radical change at every level, individual, social, national, international, in how we live is required to hear and respond, in Francis' words, to the cry of the earth and the cry of the poor. We can only accomplish this by striving to act justly in all we do. We are all connected. Francis states repeatedly that God loves and cares for all his creation, even the smallest things, and that all give him glory by doing what he created them to do. In another place, he says, "They all reflect God." Therefore, we need to rethink the place of humanity in relation to God and to the rest of his interdependent, integrated world. Our responsibility to all of creation is part of God's design, and all is essential to the whole. We might think of ourselves as in kinship with, deeply connected, to all of God's other creatures. We must therefore value and respect all that surrounds us. We are part of it, human and non-human. We are deeply connected. Care of God's creation. For centuries, we have viewed ourselves as having dominion over the world around us, that we are meant to subdue nature and use it. The idea comes from Genesis, chapter 1, 26 and 28. It has been interpreted to mean that nature is ours to do with what we wish. That view, however, does not take into account the need for justice for all of mankind and all of creation, even of generations yet unborn. Unrestrained, even exploitive use is not sustainable. We do not worry about what comes next when resources are exhausted. The paradigm Francis puts to us is one of stewardship. Genesis 2:15 also tells us, he points out, that we have a responsibility to cultivate and care, to preserve, sustain, improve, and not simply use. We must recognize the regenerative capacity of ecosystems and act within them. In that way, we work toward a worldwide common good for now and for the future. The impact on the poor. Throughout the encyclical, Francis calls our attention again and again to the poor, both individuals and nations, as he speaks about environmental degradation and climate change and their effects. The poor do the least to produce climate change, but are definitely most impacted by it. Drought destroys agriculture. Acidifying oceans destroy fisheries. Land is inundated by rising sea levels and massive floods. And we export our unusable, quote, recyclables to poor nations to store, et cetera. At home, we dump our waste or build chemical plants or refineries near the homes of the poor. In the process, societies are sickened and impoverished further, and cultures are destroyed. Social degradation. Call to solidarity. The need for action on climate and environment clearly implies a call to solidarity that we must, in justice, take into account the rights and needs of all humanity and indeed all creation, animals, plants, the inanimate world. In God's plan, all are meant to flourish, not just the fortunate, and we must provide to all, including future generations, the basic minimum needed to live productively and with dignity. We must share. It is a matter of justice. This means at every level, including that rich nations that contribute massively to climate change must give assistance to poor nations being damaged. Technological and economic development. Francis writes very frankly of our need to reconsider our current cultural and economic values. He is very emphatically critical of the subject of consumption and consumerism, the throwaway culture, and the primacy of profit. "Living according to our responsibility for care of creation in the fullest sense requires a thorough rethinking and redefinition of many of our values," he says. For Francis, all our economic and consumer decisions must be made with a view toward the common good. Development and innovation that do not produce a better world cannot be called progress. He states that there is no such thing as total ownership without consideration for anyone or anything but self. Repeatedly, he emphasized that all have a right to the basics that permit human flourishing and dignity, and all share the responsibility to distribute goods to achieve this ideal. But while challenging us to transform our lives, he also speaks strongly of the spiritual as well as the material benefits we will gain by living more simply. The time to act. Repeatedly, Francis says that conforming the way we live to the vision that he lays out in Laudato Si requires new understanding and action at every level, from the individual to the institutional, from the local to the national and international. All are called to rise above our individual interests in all areas and levels of life, including the economic and political. And then, having increased our understanding of our proper place in creation, we must act to live it out. We must rise above our indifference. And we can do that most effectively working together in community and through advocacy for public policy. We are more powerful together. In the end, however, Francis tells us, what must really change is we humans ourselves. Hope for the future. Overall, Francis stresses hope for the future throughout. He lays out a vision and action plan for a more caring, peaceful, sustainable world, and reminds us that God is with us as we work together for human good and to build a better world. He will guide and support us, and with his help, we can overcome every kind of evil. "Injustice is not invincible," he tells us.
Now that you, we've heard from multiple Popes over many years about the exploitation and lack of respect for nature, along with our responsibility to creation and the poor, let's see what we can do to help. You may be doing many of the things that you see listed on these slides, but maybe you'll find something else that you could also do. Save some of the clean and used water for your plants and flushing toilets. And many of us probably remember a few years back where we actually did use the water to flush our toilets, if you're not doing it now. Many of you probably post reminders, especially if you have kids, above the light switches. Shut off the lights, and you'll save energy. Wash and reuse your foils in plastic bags or plastic wrap. And it's interesting to see how little you actually do put into your landfill then, which usually takes years if not, if, if will ever decompose, and how little you put in it if you concentrate on recycling all items, including food scraps. And think before you throw anything away. Could this be used by someone else? Eco-friendly products are easily found now in grocery stores as well as in clothing stores. And remember, you don't have to buy new. You can always shop in those thrift stores, and there's many treasures there, trust me. Car washes actually save in two ways: water and pollution. We can continue to promote clean air by continuing our walking and cycling, which many of us have taken up over the last few months. Maybe not cycling, because I understand it's hard to find a cycle, bicycle if you don't have one. But when it comes safe again to start driving, let's consider using car pools and carpooling as well as public transportation instead of using a single-person vehicle. And now on to a little heavier or possibly more uncomfortable actions that we might consider. As Pope Francis encourages us, we should start talking about climate change with our family and our friends and how we can help. Think about the types of investments we have. How are they impacting our common home? Put your thoughts and actions and thoughts and concerns into action by speaking or writing to and electing officials who care about our climate issues. And we can all challenge ourselves and others to reduce our common, our carbon footprint. And there's a, in a website that's listed here in the EPA. If that's a little too technical for you, I found this website, which is cleanercontracostacounty.org. And it is, has a challenge going on at this point in time and is lasting through April. And it focuses on creating a cleaner and healthier community. When you open up the site, it has, there's 10 categories that you can choose from, like transportation or even hanging out at home. And within the, or among all of those different categories, there's actually 73 individual action steps that you could participate in. And the sample of these are on the, on the screen. And if you notice, under like the install low flow, which is the toilet, install low flow toilet, it will show you the channel, the difficulty. How challenging is it to complete this? This is a medium. And also, if you do the challenge, it will tell you how many challenge points you can get, and it will estimate some savings that you could do. So this is something that could actually be fun for the whole family. If not, if you're really into your neighborhood, even get a challenge going up in your neighborhood. At a minimum, pick one or two and try to put it into effect. If the investment action step caught your eye, this article actually came out this past week, discerning what the Vatican really means when it comes to investment. Earthbeat Weekly is a news letter published through National Catholic Reporter, and can be found on the ncronline.org website as listed down here at the bottom of this, the slide. Actually, I found this by going on, by Googling it, just Earthbeat Weekly, June 19th, 2020. So I hope that you have found at least one piece of information from this evening that will ins- will inspire you. And it'll also encourage you to think about Pope Francis's challenge to all of us on how we can care for our common home. Remember, we are called to solidarity with the poor as well as stewardship of the earth. Our deep regard for the dignity of every person commands us to cultivate a climate of life where each of God's children thrive and join with creation in praising our Creator. We have put together some resources. Actually, this presentation, along with a listing of other resources where you could download the encyclical or you could read it online. There's also some quotes, some key quotes from the encyclical along with the prayer. If you're interested, you can go to the social justice section within the church website. And Kristoff indicated that this recording will also be, as other recordings of town halls, will be on the church website. And the link underneath the recording should take you right into the social justice section if you're, if you were interested in doing so. And hopefully you are, hopefully we tweak something for you tonight. Also, if you're interested in learning more about our committee, feel free to speak to any of our members or come join us at one of our meetings, which we meet once a month, the third Thursday of the month for an hour. And now we're meeting via Zoom and all of us are looking forward to getting back and meeting in person, actually. So before we go into question and answer, we will end with a short prayer and then a video. All powerful God, you are present in the whole universe and in the smallest of your creatures. You embrace with your tenderness all that exists. Pour out upon us the power of your love that we may protect life and beauty. Fill us with peace that we may live as brothers and sisters harming no one. Amen. And now I'm going to turn it back over to Kristoff, who will play a short video for us. All right, welcome back. Do I need to wake you up or are you still with me? I don't know, I didn't look at chat. And I do not see any questions, so I will leave it up to you. If you have any questions or want more information, feel free to ask any of us, Buzz, Pat, or myself. You'll have to unmute yourself if you have a question. If not, I'll turn it back to you, Father John.
Okay, well, I think maybe some questions will be generated as we continue. But thanks, Pat and Buzz and Mary. Gosh, that was inspiring and really gives us some insight. And with you, I encourage people to go online and read La Dato C. It's not a lengthy document and it is inspiring reading. And I'm going to thank Kristoff for guiding and inspiring and putting the social justice committee together. You certainly are touching on an awful lot of major issues. I learned a couple phrases today in my conference on faith and the political life with the other 240 priests. And one question, or one word was third rail topics. I hadn't heard that phrase before. I think you can understand what it means, right? The third rail on the subway you avoid because if you don't, you're going to die. Well, there are third rail topics that we avoid, and I think that this is one of them. And so your suggestion that one action we could take is discussing this third rail topic, which affects us all, whether we, you know, want to believe that or not, with family and friends. And I like that idea of having a neighborhood challenge about, you know, reducing our carbon footprint or reducing some of the ways that we waste resources. The other phrase that was used in my conference today was the term hyper individualism. And that is another, you know, challenge that we have, especially as Americans. That sense of, you know, it's all about me. And we, we can recognize from Pope Francis's words, it's all about us. Every topic that we've looked at in these town halls challenges that sense of individualism and hyper individualism, being so concerned about my own needs that I'm oblivious to the cry of the poor, to the cry of the environment, oblivious to the part that I play with as being a person of white privilege in the race troubles that we're experiencing. Hyper individualism prevents a person from doing the most reasonable thing to prevent the spread of the virus in putting that clumsy but critical face mask on when encountering other people. And we see the results of that hyper individualism, just in the excess numbers that have risen in the last few days in states throughout our country, including California. So again, I want to thank you for the insights that you've given us. You know, leadership in our world is a challenge, isn't it? Leadership in our country has been challenging for us. Francis is one of the recognized world leaders for all of the troubles and struggles that the Catholic Church has had and does have, of the scandals, all the other, you know, problems that we face. Francis still remains one of the most trusted and popular figures on the world scene. Some people have criticized Francis for sticking his nose in this business of what science and the environment and ecology. But in point of fact, Francis's own background is as a science teacher. So he's well qualified, not just on a religious and spiritual and theological level, but he's also qualified as a, you know, one with a scientific background. And when we see things like our government pulling out of international climate control treaties or calling the climate change a hoax, we need the voice of Pope Francis and what he stands for and what he's calling us to. One of the things that I've recognized as you were speaking, Mary and Pat and Buzz, is how so many of the themes that we've looked at and the third rail issues all tie together. You use the word kinship as describing, Pat, as describing the connection that we have. And that's the same word that Mary Olawen used in talking about racism. That if we don't see our role in this world as striving for kinship with all people, that guides us and it holds true for this as well. I recall how emotionally touching Dr. Buckley's presentation when we had our parish doctors speaking about the coronavirus. And he talked about his dealing with the poor in the county hospital and how he recognized the severe inequality, inequality between other patients that he had worked with previously in his work and now dealing with the county hospital and the poor and the lack of justice, how some can't get to the clinic because they don't have a car or transportation, how some can't call to make an appointment because they don't have a phone. And this too, we've recognized in, when we touched on racism, how the inequality with the poor, they're the ones who are suffering most from the coronavirus. Bishop Barber on our, a Zoom call, a Zoom meeting with clergy this afternoon, after the other me, meeting, has talked about how the Latino community are the ones that are suffering the most in our area from the, from the coronavirus. Again, the poor impacted, you know, much more greatly than, than those of us who are well off. So there's, I think, a couple of questions there. Great presentation, thank you. Incredible presentation, thank you. We Americans are a small percentage of the world's population, but we use a large percentage of the world's resources. And that's been a standard fact for so long. We said, we're, I think the statistic used to be years ago, we're 6% of the world's population and we use 60% of the resources. And I'm sure that's changed from many years ago when I first, you know, learned that, that statistic. One of the, sometimes there's these big things that you see, like for instance, when you look at those pictures of the polar bears on the melting ice floes, that's a heartbreaking picture. I mean, I feel with a maternal instinct to want to just grab and hug that giant polar bear, looking at their environment, which is, you know, disintegrating and melting and leaving their lives in peril and in jeopardy. I remember years ago, learning about that plastic island. Are you familiar with that? It's a place where the currents of the ocean have brought together, I think, thousands of pounds of plastic debris that's floating in the water and has formed something that's as big as an, as a natural island. A few years ago, several students at St. Perpetua for their science fair took that on as a project and the, the pictures that they showed of that plastic island and what could be done about it. So some of those are very dramatic and drastic, but then there's those little things that you pointed out, Mary, that we can do in our daily homes, in our living. Years ago, when I used to go back to my hometown of Toledo every summer, they, I think they dreaded my visits sometimes because they, I never saw them recycle a tin can, you know? You know, they knew my line, "Don't you people know how to recycle?" They said, "I'll go back to California." So there are those little things that we can do, you know, each and every day that can make a big, a big difference in this. Reflections on anybody's part? Yeah, Laura, put your, yeah.
It's Larry.
It's me.
Larry. Me for once. Thank you for your comments. And as a youngster, I saw the relationship between caring for the environment, pollution, the health problems it creates, the poverty. And I was raised, as you know, in a city that you spent a couple of years in, Niagara Falls, New York, that had the great cataracts of Niagara, a great tourist wonder. But right next to it was a whole line of heavy chemical factories. And my own house was only a couple of blocks away from these chemical factories. And the pollution was something really horrible. And it ended up causing huge problems for people, a lot of health problems. And I could see over time how this country has addressed many of those problems and how things have gotten a lot better, actually, because of public policy. And so it pains me to see the, us going backwards, you know, getting rid of some of the protections that we've put in place, getting rid of the, the international cooperation that is needed on this worldwide problem. And now with the Black Lives Matter, with the coronavirus, we keep the relationship between health-wise, with people who live in polluted environments, who live in crowded poverty, all relate together. And I really would like to see us change our public policy back to the direction that we used to have and for people to really pay attention to that and understand how important it is.
Yeah, thank you, Larry. I couldn't agree with you more. I'm very proud that one of the priests from my order who died too young, Father Joe Power, who was a native of Niagara Falls, and he was very active with the, and I won't think of the name of the, the crisis in Niagara Falls with, with the...
Love Canal.
Love Canal, right, the Love Canal crisis where health, the health of many, many people was ruined because of the dumping of chemicals into the water. And yeah, they worked hard to try to, you know, turn that around. That was 30 years, 40 years ago.
Very good.
Jonathan?
Yes, Mary.
Mary Beth has a question.
This isn't exactly a question, but I was thinking, it might be good to know what one thing are people doing now? I know, I felt really concerned because just in the grocery stores, all of a sudden you had to use plastic or paper bags because of the coronavirus, which I see as a real step backwards. I think other things about the coronavirus crisis have also made us more oriented toward disposable things, just get rid of it, masks or, or whatever. So I know at the grocery store, they wouldn't even let you bring in bags. So I just took my groceries out in my cart and bagged them at my car as a way of at least not, you know, having to get bags. So I'd be just be interested what things other people are doing.
I did the same thing. I mean, yeah, that is one small thing that you can do. Bag them yourself in the car, put them back in the cart. Whoops.
We also, at the food drive that we had last week, we had 27 bags filled with brown paper bags that people donated. And those brown bags were ones that Monument Crisis could use to hang.
And those brown bags were ones that Monument Crisis could use to hand out their food. So we're hoping to recycle the bags that way, too.
The two comments and maybe a counterpart, Mary Beth. Meli says, "One benefit of the virus is much lower pollution rates because of the lower transportation on the roads and in the air." And they have said that, you know, some people have seen in mountain ranges that they never saw before because it was always, always polluted in one, you know, in certain parts of the world. And, you know, the clear skies, you know, because of the much fewer, many fewer vehicles on the road. But you're right, that the virus and the pandemic has really disrupted, you know, so much of, of life with that side effect. And I think Sharon's suggestion about taking the groceries in your cart to your car and have your own bag there and bag it there in your backseat or in your trunk. And Sandy Gritzer reminds us that, that garbage patch is called the Great Pacific Garbage Patch. It contains at least 79 tons of discarded plastics covering an area, this is hard to believe, 617,800 square miles. Unbelievable and so sad.
John, there was one other comment also from Jan. Did you get that?
Oh yes, okay, Jan, thank you. I can send you a link in to the info to sign a petition to get a referendum on the California ballot to reduce plastic. It needs to be postmarked by June 26th. If you want the link, she gives her email address that you can check on the, on the chat back there. And then this information, Kristoff, will be in the, on our parish website as well.
So one of the things that I was not aware of until today was when I opened the Chronicle, well, actually, the front page says "Plastic pollution is falling from the sky and in a huge amount." And some of it is the clothing we buy because we're all into these contemporary non-wrinkled fabrics that are wicking and so forth and so on. But the, the fibers from non-natural, you know, materials are actually, you know, ending up through our washing machines, no matter what detergent you're using. It's like the, just the particles or whatever that comes out of your laundry is now showing up in a hundred other ways, you know, because we're not using natural fibers anymore.
I saw that article, well Suzanne, "Plastic Falling From The Sky," but microscopically, you know, it really is a challenge. We just can't play dumb anymore. It's too serious, you know, the whole issue. We need to inform and educate ourselves. And I'm so grateful that we have a group of people in the parish who are willing to spend the time and then willing to share that with us. So in closing, the last few weeks, we've covered a lot of territory. And thank you all for your participation. The consensus was to keep going through the summer. Two weeks from now, Dr. Jenna Henspiazzo is going to join us. Jenna is a professor of Old Testament scripture at the Jesuit School of Theology. She's been on the faculty there for many years. We've had Jenna as a speaker and presenter for scripture series at St. Perpetua's, not for quite a while, but some wonderful opportunities to learn from her and her knowledge. I remember the one series in particular where she talked about, "How do you deal with violence in the Bible?" There's that one Psalm that says, and it does say this, "May you smash my enemies' heads against the rock" or the many, the babies of my enemies against the rock. And, you know, you kind of shudder when you think, read those things or, you know, how can that be in there? And she gave us, you know, an understanding of how to read those kinds of difficult passages. So anyway, Jenna is a wonderful speaker and will be with us two weeks from now. In speaking with Kristoff for next week, he suggested that we have an open forum among ourselves. We've given the opportunity for, you know, dialogue and so on. But as you can see tonight, there's not too much that comes up. But if you look at the topics that we've covered, we looked at Brother Mickey and art, how he uses art to deal with the, the challenge of the pandemic. We listened to some of our writers in the parish, poets and Joe DePrisco, a novelist in literature and dealing with the pandemic. We listened to our four, you know, insightful parish doctors, Dr. Harrow and Bob Buckley, Bob Mooney and Tim Ganey, with a really, you know, insightful understanding of how they as, you know, medical professionals are dealing with it. And then my friend, Dr. John Palin, who works in infectious disease throughout the world, gave us, you know, a great insight. You know, last week, the topic of racism, again, a third rail issue. And today, the environment. So we've heard a lot and we, I'd like to hear from you next week. Give a thought to those various topics and think for yourself and jot down, what, which one grabbed you or gave you information? Or what questions do you have or what insights did you gain? What is your reflection and your thought on those issues? The current struggle that we're dealing with in terms of our white privilege and racism, the environment, dealing with the pandemic? And especially again, in light of the news, just the last couple of days of the great increase of cases. I'd like to hear from you and I think everybody would like to share. So that'll just be an open time next week. I'll reserve the right to reduce the time for anybody who might overstep their few minutes. You know, your three minutes of fame, if that's okay with everybody. But as I say, I'd like to hear from you and, you know, what your interests, concerns, your reflection. You know, how have these things helped you, expanded your understanding? Or what insight do you, will you bring to these various topics and issues? If that's agreeable with all of you, please nod your heads. Okay. Okay, thank you. So once again, thanks to Pat, Buzz and Mary for putting such time into it. Really a thorough and excellent presentation. And if you want to unmute us, Kristoff, I'll ask that God give you a peaceful night and enjoyable rest of the week.